Call the order, the January 2020, St. Don Hutton, USD 350, Board of Education meeting. First up, election of four presidents and vice president. So take nominations for the president.
I nominate Derek.
Second.
Any other nominations? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to nominate Derek Foote as president. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same time. Okay, motion carrying. Nominations for vice president.
I nominate Carl Baer for vice president.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, Carl Baer for vice president. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same time. Okay. All right. Take a motion as far as the check signer.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the addition of Derek and remove Chad Fisher as approved check signer for the district checks.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the addition of Derek Foote and the removal of Chad Fisher as approved check signer for the district checks. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, name? Okay. All right, welcome visitors. Any additions or changes?
I do have one addition I need to add, executive session item for a student matter.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the agenda as amended.
Aye.
Okay, it's been moved to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Consent agenda.
One additional item on there, just we have an additional application for senior release after we had approved that last month. I think it's best interested this student to do that, so. Other than that, I don't have anything unusual to report.
Mr. President, the move of the board approved like consent agenda is presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, approved consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, name? Okay, motion carrying. Any patron comments tonight? Okay. First item, Rec Commission building.
I'll turn it over to these guys with the Rec Commission. Just a little background, recreation commissions in Kansas, state statute does not allow Rec Commissions to purchase real estate. They changed the law recently to say that they can acquire title to real estate through gift or donation, but that's been the last few years that they changed that law. So they're looking at getting into a building for exercise facility, office space, I think it would be a positive situation for the Rec Commission, however, they can't just go out and buy it. So it would require cooperation from the city or the school district. We are a joint Rec Commission, city and school district, to purchase that. They can enter into a lease agreement with an individual, so the owner of the property could enter a lease agreement. That would be subject to approval of this board, that's in state law, and a maximum of 10 years. But I'll just turn it over to Trey and Dan, and they can start some discussion of what they're wanting to do.
Okay, I'll start it here and then you just chime in. So as a board, we've kicked around a lot of ideas and we just feel at this point where we're at with the funds that we have, it would be best for us to purchase, well, not really purchase because we can't, but try to get a building that's affordable, but still allows us to have some space to do some things that we want to do. So we'd have a workout facility in there, we'd have room for class activities, crafts, different things, and then of course Dan would have his office in there. And so it would give us room for that, and it would also give us room down the road. If we felt like we wanted to add on to that building, we'd have the space to do it. We got the parking, we have kind of, not the storefront, but you know, it's a nice location there, it's a good spot in town. So I think that, and it's affordable, I mean compared to what we tossed around the ideas of building or, yeah, building, I mean, and that's just not going to work. So, but we need your guys' help if we can get there. Or it would, we feel it would best protect taxpayers if we could do something like this because if we don't, if we do it with an individual, a lot of things can change in five years, a lot of things can change in a 10-year lease, and it's hard to put the stipulations in there to protect. And we just don't want to do this, spend the money, and then not actually own something potentially down the road if we can ever do that. So we feel a little more protected doing this with the school than we would with an individual.
So you've discussed leasing the building from the individual, perhaps at the end of the lease term, that individual would donate the property.
Right.
And that's, we're just talking that.
Yeah, so we, yeah.
If we have that agreement between two public entities.
I feel, yeah, it feels safer, yeah. I mean, I don't, our attorney doesn't want us to put that in writing because it's basically then kind of more of a lease-to-own-ish, and we're not supposed to technically do that. So I think we wouldn't necessarily want that in there, but we, if we do it with the school, we wouldn't necessarily have to, and we'd feel more protected. If we do it with an individual, I would feel we would need to somehow have something in there to protect ourselves, and he just doesn't feel we can have that in there. So that's why we've come to Josh and tried to figure out a way around this. I mean, we still, at the end of the time, would like, at the end of the lease term, we would like to have the building donated to the Rec, to where the Rec can own it and control what goes on there. And then the lease term could be talked about, and whatever that amount of years would be, can't be more than 10, a max of 10.
So one thing, our thought was that the district could purchase the building from the individual, set up a lease agreement with the Rec Commission, it would be similar to the lease agreement we have with the city for the football field. We insure everything, if we want to update something, we pay for it. The light pole falls over, we need to put in new lights, we did it. So the city does nothing with our football field area, we just leased it from them. That would be a similar arrangement with the Rec Commission, where we own it and they would insure it, they would, they want to improve it, they would do that. So everything would be, would be on them to maintain it and hold up, keep it, everything. My concern was, if we did that, we don't have the upfront cash to be able to just say, okay, we'll purchase it and then charge them a monthly fee. So my question to our attorney is, well, if we did a 10-year lease with them, can't they just pay that upfront? And if we were going to lease it to them, we would need to add on that purchase price over time because we would be losing interest, and so there would be a benefit to them cost-wise, so we would pay that lease fee upfront and then lease it for 10 years. You know, the purchase price we're looking at is $65,000. They've been discussing that with the owner, and I don't know if there would be any other discussions about that. If we start talking about wanting to negotiate something, we should probably go into closed session. I do have a motion there, I'm not sure it's necessary in this case, but you know, $65,000 over 10 years is about $540 a month. What is the Rec currently paying for the five-month city building? It's about $500 a month for the office and the Wood Center. So economically, it makes sense from that standpoint, too, so.
And this kind of keeps our same relationship we have with the school, where we get to use the school gymnasium when it's available and the lodge gymnasium when it's available. And we'd like to still pursue using the different parts of a lodge that help us offer more stuff. So it doesn't really change those relationships, I guess, so.
So I'm not 100% sure it's workable. I've discussed it with our attorney, he said yes, we can purchase, yes, we could lease the building, and yes, we could gift it to the Rec Commission at a time that we decide is needed. I think our attorney was kind of on the same page, we don't want to, you can't put that in an agreement that we're going to give the property to the Rec Commission, because then it's, like I said, it's a lease-to-own, and they can't really do that, so. So it couldn't really be a legal agreement that you pay this money and then you end up owning the building, because that's a purchase. But having the Rec Commission and this board under that understanding that, hey, this is what we're going to look at doing, and then whatever boards are in place at that time, we'd have to make that decision.
Right.
Our attorney wasn't sure on whether we could take that lease fee and pay it upfront, because that essentially looks like a purchase. So he was checking on that, so I can't guarantee that that can be done. He was uneasy about that at first, but was going to do some more research, so. Still waiting on that question to be answered, whether that's feasible or not.
Is the gas company still in there, or are they going to be out?
They will, they are currently still in there, but they will be out once we get this figured out.
Do you have any sort of deadline or timeframe, decision has to be done?
No.
Okay.
I mean, we'd like to do it sooner rather than later, but no, there's not a specific date that has been asked yet.
So we're okay, we need to wait on that, so.
What happens, he would get back to me today, but he didn't.
What happens if we can't do that, then what would, do we know what we would?
No. I don't know.
That's what I was trying to, yeah.
I guess my question to them would be, how much can we pay upfront?
Yeah, okay, sure.
Can there be a?
Yeah.
To me, it makes sense that if we're going to have a $65,000 10-year payment, we're going to need to add some interest costs to that. It benefits us to get the cash upfront, it benefits you that we don't have to add any interest cost over time.
Yeah, that's right.
So it makes sense for everybody involved in protecting taxpayers' money, I think.
Yeah, and also if we were to do it through Tom, we would have property tax for however many years we leased it, and we don't have, is that correct, that we do not, we would not have?
Correct, it would come off the property tax rules.
Yeah, it's exempted. So that's a savings over, of course, 10 years, I mean, it adds 2,600 bucks a year, so.
You've already moved in there, right?
Yes.
I would need to check on that since we would be leasing it, but.
Okay, sure.
Leasing it to another taxpaying entity, so.
Yeah, sure.
I don't know that for sure, but I'm assuming it would come off the tax rules and there would be no property tax paid, but.
Are you paying rent now?
We haven't yet, but we will be, we're working out some sort of an arrangement that will be fair to us in the meantime, yeah. We're basically utilizing it like we utilize anything else for now, just so we can be in there and use the space. But it's not official, really, I mean, it's just, we're utilizing the space, and he's.
We're utilizing it for spin right now.
For spin, yeah, for spin class. Yeah, we're not.
There's actually not even an office.
Yeah, there's not an office yet, so.
It's not working from up.
He's mobile.
Okay.
And I can tell you, at the end of the 10 years, if it's, you know, at the end of the 10 years, if we do this, the district owns the building and is leasing it to the Rec Commission, to move to, to transfer ownership adds cost, you know, because there will be some title fees and all that, not a lot, but it may make sense after that 10 years that just keep it the way it is.
Sure.
And don't pay anymore.
Right.
Kind of like we do with the city, we don't, we could transfer ownership, but it's just going to be a little bit of cost that doesn't benefit anybody.
Yeah, and if it was a school that owned it, you know, we could probably wrap our heads, minds around that. With an individual, you can't do that for, you know, for an infinite amount of time, because it just doesn't work very, as well, but with us, yeah, it could work that way.
And we had discussed that the Rec Commission would cover any legal fees that we have and purchase, you know, there would be some title fees again with closing costs and those things that they would have to come up with. So the district, we will be out, you know, a little bit of time, but in the end, I think would be a positive.
Very much so, yes.
For the Rec Commission, for sure.
Yes.
Who pays the interest on it, I mean, the insurance on it?
The Rec Commission.
Okay.
There may be a little bit of an increase in premium just because we're adding square footage as far as our liability, but I don't even know.
If any, I can, I could get that number, but it'd be next to nothing, and if we needed to cover that, too, I mean, we could, it would be a very small amount if there's any.
We might have to check with our agent.
Yeah, you should.
I don't really trust him.
With them having the liability insurance on it and the property insurance. All in favor of doing whatever we can do legally, so. Amount consensus, everybody's comfortable doing that, and we can work something out with our attorney? Okay. Okay, well, we'll see what we can get done. There would be a, I assume we would need to have a lease agreement signed, and then the purchase of the building would be contingent on that lease being approved.
Yeah.
And as far as gifting the property at some time, I don't know that there's a way to put that in writing without violating that.
Yeah.
That law that.
Probably need to have it someplace, though, that agreement someplace, because we're assuming that somebody that's sitting here in this room right now is going to still be on the school board and the Rec board. Okay, yeah, we'll just designate them to be out there. Or you can stay here, you can come in to be in here at least that long.
Yeah, I would ask the attorney if we could just do like a memorandum of understanding that it's our intent, that if we've recovered all of our costs and the lease terms have been fulfilled for 10 years, that we consider donating the property, or I don't know what, I'd have to ask the attorney what needs to be done there, but.
I'd like to see a transaction happen as soon as possible, even if it's under 10 years.
Oh, you mean to transfer it over? And I don't know what, whether the 10-year lease or a 5-year lease, or does it matter? I don't know.
That's an important question.
I know the attorney was just concerned that it's not just an arrangement to, where the Rec is actually buying this. That I think that was his concern.
Yeah, our attorney likes five years or 10 years, more than one month, two months, as we proposed that.
The perception is the perception.
Right, yeah.
Which is pretty obvious if you do like a.
And like I mentioned before, the $65,000 over 10 years, that's a little more than what you're paying now for the office and the Wood Center.
Right.
So it's not, it's not much more at all. Okay, well, we'll come in. Any other questions?
Thanks.
We'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott, appreciate it.
House renovation project.
We've been working on this, we discussed it a little bit last month, there was a house that came up for sale and got us thinking about, hey, can we do this? House renovation project, you know, buy a house, gut it, the kids come in, do all the work, wiring, plumbing, sheet rock, all that, get a great experience with construction and home improvement, probably take place over two, three years. And then a house came up for sale. It's, one we were looking at is near the library, it's probably a little too much for what we're wanting to do, but this is a house of garners that is, this is Smith Hill here, and there's Adam Morris's house, that puts you in the right spot. So it'd be right north of his house, is this property. This shed, big garage is included in that. The asking price right now is $15,000. It would need to shore up some joists in the floor, it's pretty springy, the joists are undersized, but there's a half, three-quarter basement, it's all accessible by basement or crawl space. I would want somebody else to look at it, just to make sure, you know, if the structure's good, the foundation looks good, but I would want somebody smarter than me to look at it and say, yeah, this is a good structure, the foundation, you know, the siding, the interior. We would redo the floor plan a little bit. My initial budget, about $80,000 to get in the house, purchase some equipment, because we would need to buy some things to be over there. You know, it's a good location for our kids, we're just, you know, just a block and a half away from our shop. It's actually closer than that, the house over here by the library to the shop, but we'd still need to purchase some equipment right next to Mr. Morris's house, not that I want him over there on the weekends messing with that, but you know, he can keep an eye on things, he's right there. So how could we afford this? Keeping in mind that the goal would be to sell it at some point, we're going to get some of it back. I don't know, we would get all of it back. We're not flipping houses, hoping to make money, it's a good learning experience for the kids, that's what we're after. So we could use some capital out of the dollars. There's some grants available, not a whole lot that I've found yet, but Home Depot has a grant. And then perhaps using some money from the Education Foundation, if that board would be willing to donate. So that would be spread out over two or three years, you know, it wouldn't be all upfront. So the questions, I guess the question I have for you is, would you be supportive of us doing this? I need to make the budget work, we need to gauge interest, if there's only three kids interested in this, it's probably not going to work. But if we have, if we have six or dozen kids that want to do this.
And the idea would be that those kids would be blocked in multiple slots there, it wouldn't just be one hour there and back, you know, we'd block them off for three periods or something where they're working on it for an extended period of time.
So they would have two or three shop hours, they'd be back to back, and they're at the house. Is this, is this doable? We did it when I was at Burton, I was, when I was principal there, I was heavily involved in that, it's doable, it's workable, it's a pretty neat project, kids get a lot out of it, even if they're not going into a construction field, just at home improvement and understanding how things work in a house, how things go together, and how it can repair the drywall, those things would be beneficial for everybody.
Do any of the kids know anything about this, I mean, are any of you interested? Enjoy the class because of it?
Adam has talked to a few of the kids about it, and he's gotten some interest from them, we have some at Wenton seniors that said, man, I wish we were doing this now, but we haven't done an official.
And that's our next step, if this board is.
I'd just be curious, if it gained more kids in the class, I'd do it, it might be worth it, but.
I can't say it will or won't, but I kind of have the feeling that we'll have some kids involved in it that normally wouldn't have maybe taken those classes, that's my guess.
Did you say $15,000?
The house?
$15,000 is what they're asking right now.
So what's, I mean, that's fairly cheap, what's wrong with the house?
Yeah, it's, I mean, it needs some structural, like the joists need shored up, it's plaster, so.
It needs redone inside.
We would gut, gut the house, all the plaster would come down, redo the wiring.
That'd be more work, but foundation, I guess, start off with.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. If the foundation's good and the external structure is good, I think it's worth diving into. If it's not, you know, having to redo a foundation or redo the exterior structure, that becomes too much, then you're just building a new house, but.
If that one doesn't work out, is there another one that you're looking at?
There was the one over here by the library, and that's potential. They're asking 48.5, I think, for it right now.
Which one's that?
That could come down, right, you know, right south of the library.
Right across the street, huh?
Yeah, on the hill.
Okay.
The hill.
Oh.
Eight feet taller than surrounding.
Mrs. Room's house.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Does that have a basement in it, too?
I don't know. This one's in a lot better shape, it would be, I mean, you'd be probably destroying a room that maybe doesn't need to be destroyed, and you can probably get by, I'm not sure. That's all lathe and plaster in there, too, but.
With it being a construction environment, not a class, do we have any liability potential?
No, no more than our.
In the shop?
In the shop. Asbestos would be a concern, that we may have to have a bayonet. And you know, when I threw out that $80,000, that's just a ballpark guess, we'd need to put together a formal budget of how much we're wanting to spend on each thing, but that's very conservative there, I think we could easily do it for less than that, but.
Would the kids be involved in the construction aspect, or the budgeting in the construction aspect, like purchasing, I mean, would they be a part of all that?
Yeah. Yep, everybody wants custom cabinets, but save a lot of money buying stock cabinets, those discussions would be all part of it. Depending on how many kids would get in it, you know, it might be three years, it might be two years, I don't have a lot.
Any chance of making that available for Stafford or Maxwell kids who might be interested?
Absolutely, it'd be part of our interest, certainly, to see.
Something I'd be interested in, at least entertaining, I want to do, you know, have it for our kids first.
Absolutely.
And you know, there's other opportunities, maybe we get a couple of realtors in to go through it with the kids to talk about what the house needs to be attractive for this area, so that they can know if they need to add. Right now, it's one bathroom, and they're going to tell them that it needs another bathroom and stuff like that, so we might have an opportunity to bring other people in to work with the kids. Landscaping may be something that we look at as well.
Now, are kids still involved with the development, house potential coming in? Is that a conflict in that timeframe?
No, it'll be done. There may be potential to do another house like that down the road, but right now, there's nothing in the works to do another one of those houses next year. You know, and this could be an ongoing project, we do it, get a house for a couple of years and sell it, do another one.
And it potentially provides something that this community really needs, is a decent house that is affordable.
How many bedrooms is that, one by hands?
Three. Let's see, 1,600 square feet, when you count the upstairs, I think that's your house, so.
And that is a full basement?
Not quite full.
Unfinished?
It's unfinished, and it's exterior.
Access.
Access. Can you really see?
I can see.
Hard to see, but this is a two-story area right here. Everything else is a big kitchen addition, it's pretty, pretty big, kitchen dining area.
There's the liabilities, right?
Yeah, there's, that shit goes with it. And that's, it'd be a nice, nice shop for somebody, it's ugly, it needs to be, and structure seems good. And then there's a foundation here for garage, I think that's a container unit, probably what we're looking at there. There's a.
Have you visited the Tom, I assume it's Tom's, about maybe donating it and sharing the profit on the side?
We haven't got as far as discussing price. This might be a spot where we ought to go into closed session, discuss that. The law allows us to protect our negotiating position on the purchasing property, so we're just going to talk about that. We can go into closed session and discuss that, if you'd like to do that. There's a motion there, if you.
Do you want to go to the executive session?
No.
Let's find out if there's interest first. Enough interest of the students.
Do we want to get interest from students, and do we need to have somebody look at it before we get that far, just to make sure there's that more structure?
Oh, yeah. But yeah, there is potential to, yes, ask, ask them to donate.
Well, I mean, do you need us to move on this fast, are you worried about somebody else buying it?
I am worried about somebody else buying it, but I don't want to get in a hurry. I, the way I left it with Tom is that, you know, I'm. I, I, the way I left it with Tom is that, you know, I'm very interested, I think it would work for us, but, you know, if somebody comes with money, you're probably just gonna have to take it, you know, so. I don't wanna end up with a house that we can't do anything with, or it's, we buy something and we don't have kids in the program.
I'm sentencing you want us to go into executive session?
No, that's all right. I guess if we get serious about it, we will have to, you know, talk price and...
Do you need more direction from us?
I don't think so. We, sounds like everybody's supportive, we need to know if there's interest and...
Big thing, knowing that you guys are all in on this and it's not a money-making proposition, it's a learning experience for kids.
We put eighty thousand into this and sell it for fifty, I think that's a thirty thousand dollar program, we just, thirty thousand dollar expense over three years for the kids.
It'd probably be easier to act on when you, the structure and the foundation was sound, that way we weren't getting ourselves into something, oh, we've got another foundation and everything.
Turbines.
Turbines.
So if we go ahead and I get student interest and you get somebody to look at it, if we need to act fast, you can do a special meeting, right?
We can.
Do we need to approve?
I should have sent that out, you agreed.
No. Now, you just approve that with the bills, you can come up with that?
Okay, all right, any other discussion? All right, Principal Contract.
Uh, you have Mr. White's contract, really, we're just talking about the terms of the I anticipate recommending to the board that we will forward his two-year contract at the next meeting. So if there's anything you'd like to discuss about the contract, we can do that now, or if there's anything we need to discuss in executive session, we can do that when we get there. But otherwise, this is just your first look at the contract. And we do two-year contracts for administrators, and every year we approve them just to be rolled forward. So, that's our standard procedure, so. If I screw up and you wanna fire me, at least I have another year to, to figure it out. And I think that two-year contracts allow administrators to make tough decisions and sometimes we make people mad. Give us some protection there to be able to do the right thing, even if it makes people mad.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay.
Uh, Board Meeting Dates. This is, state law changed, said we need to set, need to elect the board president, vice president, and set meeting dates in January. Makes sense for us to set those meeting dates at the beginning of the school year, we have our calendar set, so we did that, and now we just need to reaffirm them. So that'll be our standard practice, I think, to set the meeting dates and then reaffirm in January. So we're just reaffirming these dates as we already approved them in, in July.
Mr. President, I move that the board approved the board meeting dates as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the board approved the meeting dates as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, motion carried. Midwinter Classic.
Uh, we put this on the agenda just because we've had, we've struggled having teams in the tournament, worried about the future of that tournament. This year we have seven teams, we have, we were notified Ness City is leaving next year. Since that time, last week, they notified us that the Barton tournament, is the tournament our girls go to, is ceasing to exist. They'll be down to five teams next year with that tournament. So that complicated our discussion about our tournament. As you know, the Lions Club, they put together the tournament and get a lot of volunteers to help with the concessions and tournament hosts and, and all of that. I'm not certain of the future of the Lions Club doing that. In the near future, I think, there's no plan to change that, but with, we've tried to recruit teams and we have the school contacts, we've just struggled getting those teams in. I think the issue with teams leaving our tournament and the Barton tournament is they wanna get into tournaments where the boys and girls play at the same time. There may be other reasons, I don't know about. I know, I think our tournament, you have one or two A schools beating up on four A schools, and it doesn't look good when you're a four A school. We've had in the recent past, I'm not sure how much of that played into it, but we talked about, could we run a boys and girls tournament together? That would help with that. Teams are wanting to get into a boys and girls tournament, and let's make one. That's very, that's easier said than done.
With our old gym, is that possible?
I would not feel comfortable running a varsity game in that old gym. Could we? Yeah, we practice in there, we practice our varsity teams in there, and we play junior high JV, we don't do any high school games in there at all. We run them all in the main gym, maybe do, do some C team now and again at high school. Not ruling that out, but I wouldn't feel comfortable doing that. Running a boys and girls tournament, eight teams each in one week in one gym, would mean starting about three o'clock and running four games every night, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and then running eight games on Saturday. And then no wiggle room for weather, that's a concern. Starting your games at ten o'clock in the morning on Saturday is doable. Put a lot of pressure on our volunteers that, that help. Another thought was we could just start another tournament, a girls tournament here the following week, is that doable? I guess where we ended up, Vance, I talked a little bit about this, the girls tournament, you wanna share some of your thoughts?
I've, I've helped with the Lions Club tournament for, I don't know, ten, twelve years, you know, every year's a struggle to get, you know, teams in, and you want teams that are close, 'cause you want their crowds to come, and, you know, we've been done in Kansas City and Wichita thing, they don't bring anybody, so. And the direction is, we need to go to a boys and girls tournament, so. So I'm, I'm in favor of that.
But if the Lions Club does give this up, and I'm not, I'm speaking out there, so I'm not sure if they are, but who, who is gonna run it, the school?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if at any point they decide they don't wanna do it, yeah, the school would run it?
Do you, do you know what kind of income they make off of this?
I don't know for sure. I think it's pretty good, and they donated, but, you know, the schools are on it, they could do other things with it, whatever we wanted, I guess.
Well, it sounds like an opportune time, and Barton's gonna be no longer doing girls, at least a lot of you pull some of those teams, if you're, that way it's not hard trying to get girls teams in here at the same time.
Ideally, we would have a couple of years to figure something out. Having, trying to take a tournament that has decided that we're, we can't do it anymore, you know, they'll, they'll be down to five teams next year. That's what we've been kicking around all week, could we do something? Could we get ahold of those teams? We have an opportunity to be in Fairfield's tournament, they're willing to take us in Little River for the girls tournament, to be a full eighteen tournament next year. They're gonna send us a contract this week. So that's been our discussion, is it makes sense to try to throw something together, get a girls tournament together, four or five teams, and build on that, or make sure that we have our girls in a, in a tournament.
So this is Barton's last year?
Barton's last year, yeah. As of, yeah, as of next year, our girls do not have a tournament that we're scheduled for.
I, I think, you know, we're gonna have growing pains the first year, you're not, you're not gonna get eight teams, I don't believe, you know, first year out, 'cause most schools are tied in two-year contracts. But, you know, even if you get four teams, you can have a, a open and get your three games in, but I just think that, well, Boysington is probably one of the closest boys and girls tournaments, and they have a waiting list to get in. And I visited with Jared Smith, he's the Larnard coach, and he's concerned that if we don't go to a boys and girls tournament, they may pull out. So, you know, ultimately, we wanna save our boys tournament, but if we can add the girls, then that makes it even better.
So you would target two weeks, the, or all try, to try to do it all in one week? Or do the girls?
I, I, I think the draw for teams is, it's one week, you have everybody, which should keep your volunteers.
I don't think we can do two weeks and call it one tournament, can we?
Well, you do boys one week and girls the next week. Yeah, yeah, I don't think you can carry that tournament over a period of two weeks, it has to be a boys and girls.
And I, I looked at the bracket for the Larnard tournament, we do a preseason tournament up there at the Katty Classy, and they do all their games except for four on Saturday in one gym. The fifth and sixth place boys and girls, and seventh and eighth boys and girls go across the street, so it is possible.
Well, they do, they do Thursday and Friday games in there.
Well, it wasn't on the, the bracket, wasn't listed that way.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they do them, I'll have to check on that.
Yeah, I can text it to you, you can put it up there or whatever, but just if you wanna study it, but I think it is possible, and, I mean, I think it's the future. If we wanna keep a good boys tournament, we're gonna have to adapt, so.
I'd like to keep it all in one week. I know Rick has trouble finding people, that Martin has trouble finding people for the kitchen.
Well, and that's the other thing, is, we're talking about the Lions Club's tournament.
Yeah.
That, that they do, and they, they get the volunteers for and get the money, and then we do supervision, we escort people out when they need to be, and Stephanie puts in a lot of time and overtime, and, and we cover that cost, that's the, and our custodians overtime and all that, you know, that's hard, hard cost. But whether they wanna have anything to do with the girls tournament, I don't, I don't know, I haven't even...
I, I did visit with a few guys, Todd Whiteoff and Bob Mercer, about the lodge possibly doing that as a community service of having some volunteer guys come in and help, you know, fill gaps. And they thought that that was probably a doable thing, that the lodge would be in favor of stepping up to the plate and helping out.
Right.
Tournament's good for the community, it's either can we get the teams and can we get the people?
Yeah.
I don't think I would wait, the way the direction sounds like it's going, anyway. Wouldn't wait, yeah, I wouldn't wait to, to act upon it as far as, especially Barton, I still think that Barton's not gonna do it anymore, there's some teams are gonna go somewhere else.
Yeah, but at this point, Lions Club hasn't even up yet, did it?
Barton's down.
Yeah, Lions Club.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't wanna step on Lions Club toes, 'cause they don't agree.
Right, right, no, yeah, that's what I'm saying, any conversation about adding a girls tournament would need to go through discussions with them, and that's just, that's another issue of, you know...
Have to help them, do whatever they need.
Grabbing those tournaments that are exiting Barton, it seems like good timing, but trying to throw together a tournament one year from now, where I, there's no certainty of, we might have two teams, it might be us and Central Plains, and everybody else finds a tournament, I don't know. It, it might be that we put it together and then we have, we have a full eight teams, that...
Yeah, I, I would feel better if our AD or whoever called the existing teams we have now, plus Barton County, and just get a feel for, hey, does this sound doable?
Yeah.
And then make that phone call to the Lions Club, because obviously it's their tournament, and they're not being informed to this point, if I understand right, so they, I mean, it's their call.
But they know the situation that the tournament is in currently. They know that they're down to six, and the struggle will only get worse, so they, they kinda know that something has to change, I would assume.
Right, and really, this discussion initially was, hey, let's talk about that and with the Lions Club, and at what point do we, are we gonna be responsible for that? And now it's the girls tournament.
Three or four Lions Club members.
Right.
Everybody else is, they were the best, but they're not members.
Right, right, right. So we'll be pressed to make this decision this week, I mean, to be honest, we've got a, we'll have a contract with Fairfield for our girls team and need to decide.
Who's current president of Lions Club? Is that Rick Hymn?
I don't know, I didn't know any of that.
Rick's head of the tournament.
Yeah.
And he's, he's told people that when he was grandson, that Larnard is a senior, he wants to probably retire as a big head, he may still help, but he doesn't wanna head it up anymore, was my understanding, which is one more year.
Okay. Well, it's not easy, thank you for the input, you know, we'll, we'll have, we'll call some people and see what kind of interest there would be in a girls tournament, and I'll touch base with Rick and see about what their feeling is on that. Our initial discussions have been, and even with Coach Smith, you know, I asked him, you know, 'cause he, he approached me right after we heard about the Barton tournament, said, hey, can we do a girls tournament, too? Is there a way to do it? He's interested in that, and his feeling today is, is it more important that we have a tournament for the girls here, regardless of what it is, let's, let's do that, go all in, or, or we get into Fairfield and we're assured at least two years of our kids having a tournament to be in? And he said, I think we need to go to Fairfield. So that's just one piece of the puzzle, that's our coach's input on that, as far as now, and I always have a feeling as administrators that having that tournament for the girls to be in, if we had more time to plan and, and get something together, maybe we lean more the other way. We can get some more input from, from those schools and, and talk with Rick and...
I feel like we play a lot of league games, but has there been a discussion of having a league tournament?
There has been, there's been one there.
There has. I feel like we play a lot of league games anyways, but...
I agree.
Play the same teams over and over again.
Yeah, at least that locks you into who's going to what tournament, so...
I really hope we can get a girls tournament here, 'cause I'm afraid if we go to Fairfield, it's gonna be too easy to just keep renewing that contract instead of...
Fairfield's just a girls tournament?
Yeah. And there, there is the trick, is you have, you have, like even our, for instance, Burton is in that Fairfield tournament, well, could we just get ahold of those? We could make a Fairfield-Burton team, uh, tournament, you know? Or Fairfield, uh, St. John tournament, where the girls go one place and boys come here, but Burton has their own tournament. So you have some of that, the boys are already involved in another tournament, so it's, there's a lot of moving parts on scheduling that, that somebody, somebody's girls are in a tournament they're happy with and...
Did Ness City say why they're leaving?
Be boys, girls, I don't know where they're going, but Ness City's leaving Barton.
See, that's why they're not... And, you know, ultimately, it goes back to, we're still not gonna have a good boys tournament if we don't try to have a girls tournament. And, you know, others will...
Just to go back to the league tournament thing, if we go to a league tournament, that essentially ends the boys tournament, because it'll be that, that week. And that's been why we don't have a league tournament, it's because of the Midwinter Classic.
Because they have to rotate sides.
I think it's good for the tent, rings.
I agree.
I don't think anybody wants to lose that tournament.
Yes, I don't, I don't, yeah, I agree, I wish, I, I would love to have a boys and girls tournament here, logistics of it, question of, do we dive in and say, we're gonna do it regardless of how many teams are in it, or whether we make sure our kids have a, have a tournament to be in?
Well, Lisa said she'd work the concession stand every minute of every day.
Because I do make the best possible happy.
Anyway, we'll keep you posted, I guess, thanks for input.
Okay. Policy updates?
Uh, pretty simple, policy update this time around, usually the winter ones are a little more simple. This is just some updates on the investment and funds policy, policy DFE. I'm not gonna read all these to you, all the, the changes are made in red, this is coming from KAS, KU attorneys. Uh, this does...
This does make things a little easier, where I don't have to do a formal bid to get CD, get our money in a CD, just request for proposals. I don't have to publish that, I just contact them. It makes it a lot more, a lot easier to just do business and get this done. So that's what those changes are in that policy. And then the other policy to consider, at this point, I don't plan to recommend adopting this policy. This came from KS, or KSDE, came from the State Department of Education. Their board took action to make a more comprehensive policy on, on vaping. So, does this mean we allow vaping at our school? No, we don't. We already have a policy against it. Their policy goes a step further to say that anybody wearing, you know, a t-shirt with a vape company on it is against the rules. We wouldn't allow that anyway with our students and staff. So it does take it a little bit further, but really not much. I would prefer that KASB gives us a recommended policy rather than this from KSDE. I would anticipate that policy would be out in the summer updates. So I don't know that we gain anything by adding this policy. We already, nicotine delivery devices, we are covered on the vape devices for staff and students. So I'll recommend that investment policy next month, and I won't plan on recommending this policy. Better do it and throw it out, since it's been a topic of discussion at the state level.
Okay. Any other questions?
Where we're at on this, we've discussed it a little bit. So we lost our foreign language teacher to Stafford with their special situation. We advertised for the position, didn't find anybody. I've had terrible luck in my career finding foreign language teachers. They're just not there. There's just not teachers out there. I think where we're at is we need to hire a non-certified position, so it wouldn't be a certified teacher, so it would be cheaper, but this would be a full-time position. That person would facilitate our online courses, so our kids can get Spanish I and Spanish II for credit through the state that says Spanish I and Spanish II. That fits with the Board of Regents requirements for their scholars curriculum. And maybe a couple hours of conversational Spanish, where they would just do Rosetta Stone and practice speaking. It would be less of the formal language learning, but with the goal of maybe being more, more fluent as far as having a conversation, be able to use Spanish language. That person would also maybe spend a couple hours in the office, translating documents, interpreting phone calls. We don't have a kid set up for that. We need a regular setup for that. And then maybe helping with our ESL kids too, the kids that we get in that don't speak much English. So essentially, I did include an FTE sheet on your, the staff FTE on the top there. I'm sorry, the checklist and report title on, on there is the supporting documents. I don't know why it came across that way, but the FTE staff numbers. This just shows our teaching staff, teaching, teachers, counselors, administrators, over the history, the recent history. I had this on here for a discussion about Mr. White's contract, because I anticipated the question about adding an elementary principal. So you can see there's not been much change. We did add a preschool teacher. That came off of the roles from special ed. That had to be done, they were funding our preschool program. And then we added a halftime counselor, you know, with the addition of Mrs. Walker being here full-time. Things have changed a little bit in our elementary. Secondary, not much change at all, just a little shuffling with the learning lab and the music, but really, that was essentially two full-time positions between the two. So when we look at our administration, the question becomes, where are we going to, what positions are we going to cut in order to afford that elementary principal? And I can't go through there and pick those two positions that we should eliminate to make that happen. This row here is our head count, K-12. We do have preschool, so I'm not figuring those numbers in. And then certified staff, number of kids per certified staff. That includes administrators and counselors. So it just hasn't changed a lot. Every dollar we've had has gone into staff to give raises. So as far as the Spanish, can we afford it? Well, we have that halftime position. We've had it for years. We don't have it this year. I would see as adding a full-time, non-certified position is basically replacing that halftime teacher. Be a little more than a halftime teacher, but so it's available.
So do you think that's going to be easier to fill, when you say non-certified?
Yes, yes. Mr. White asked me when we were talking about this, do you think we should go and advertise it, try to get a certified teacher? And our response was, no, I don't think so. We could, just to say we're doing our due diligence, but we might, we may find somebody that's here for a year, or that's here for two years. But I don't see that as a long-term, a long-term thing. I do think we could find somebody every year for that position, in a non-certified position.
What are other school districts doing? They have the same problem we do, I'm guessing.
Online contract with...
Is Topeka doing anything to help? Any, any recommendations and what direction to go?
No. Foreign, foreign people, you can get with, there's an organization that you hire teachers from overseas.
They pay a pretty good sum of money to get in that organization, and then they can only be there for...
It's like seven thousand dollars or something like that? Pay a few thousand dollars just to be in the program, to have a chance at these teachers.
And then you know they're going to leave after two years or...
Three years, maybe. They can stay for three years, and then they're gone. So what we're doing now is we've got a teacher that supervises them in their online program. And it's not, not great, it gets them the credit. This wouldn't change that a whole lot, except that maybe we'll have some kids taking that conversational class that they don't care about that Board of Regents course, they just want to learn how to speak Spanish. And then fill some other gaps as well.
But if they still want the Board of Regents, they can still take an online class.
Correct. They can do exactly what they're doing this year right now. It would just be a non-certified person in there that is supervising that learning program.
Rosetta Stone is not approved by the state, because it doesn't have the technical aspect. So we probably use Rosetta Stone along with this person, and they learn how to speak it more instead of having the technical aspect of Spanish.
And it would still count for the graduation. It just wouldn't count toward the Board of Regents scholars curriculum. But we'd still have that course that they can take if they want. So, any thoughts?
I would say start looking just to see if you can find first. Think the money's going to be close to saying.
You mean, start looking for a certified teacher?
Your own.
In this position?
A non-certified, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's more important they can speak it than they take a class and get some of the Board of Regents part. So conversational Spanish, if we can find the right person, great.
And as far as hiring a certified teacher, I'd say about 5% chance we could hire a full-time teacher that certified in Spanish. That's my blind guess of our chances. Finding a halftime certified teacher, which would be what we can afford here, is zero. We had zero applicants for that halftime position last year, zero for the full-time position also. So I think long-term, if we can find a good person to be in there, I don't care about their certification. I mean, ideally, I want that, but somebody that can work with kids, fill some other roles, so... Well, we won't take any action on that until we recommend somebody to hire, I guess.
Port of the bracket, Carl?
I sat in on the new board training, I guess, earlier this week with Raymond, and kind of got brushed up on some stuff. It's been a while since I've done that, so it's kind of nice. So what I did...
Did Raymond pass?
He did really well.
Devin?
I really don't have much this time. We had an 8:00 AM call-in session the last time, just to go over approving the consent agenda, basically, so we pay bills. But there's a very, very strong likelihood I won't be able to make the meeting next week, and I wondered if any of you would be willing to go in my place. I wouldn't ask, except I'm going to miss... Oh, well, forget it. No, I do need it this month. Next month, I'm not going to be able to go, because we've moved our school board meeting to the same night as that, and I don't want to miss two meetings in a month. So if anybody's able to go this month, I would appreciate it. It's at 7:00 next Monday, it's at 7:30 next Monday in Pratt, and they feed you beforehand. Don't all of your jumbo meals.
It's better than here, huh?
I mean, good, big, whole meal, yeah. And the agenda is long.
Sometimes it doesn't take a long agenda.
When I first started, the meetings were about 25 minutes long, and now it's up to about... Last year, there were some two-hour plus, but we're back down to about 45 minutes to an hour.
Okay.
Okay, well, that went nowhere.
Look at your calendar. Interesting, if you hold them.
Yeah, please.
I do appreciate the training.
It was very informative. Glad to be, glad to be on board.
Next month, you give us a refresher course?
Yeah. It was, it was very interesting. I learned a lot.
Nothing for me? Administrative?
We need to talk about the work release then or later.
Nope, we did hit the consent agenda, it's done.
Okay. All right. We're good. Want to give an update on the Genius Hour projects our junior high's been doing, seventh and eighth grade, all year long, we've been working on these projects. And what it is, is a self-directed lesson where they choose their topic about whatever they're passionate about. Whatever they choose that's interesting to them. It's been kind of a eye-opening experience for everybody involved. We have five teachers who are helping with it, and we've been coming over here. But those students have all chosen topics that are kind of channeling to them, and it's been kind of cool to watch. We don't know how it's going to look. In the end, they're going to have to give a presentation about what they learned. So it'll look, it'll look like a science fair, maybe, you know, a night where people come in and listen to these spills. It's not like they're going to be in the auditorium one at a time giving their presentation. We have kids who chose to do bullying prevention and study the different programs. We have kids writing their own song, building an RC car. We have a student that's constructing 3D models of a horse, the muscle structures and the bone structures and everything. Person wants to be a veterinarian. And we have an individual who's just interested in gemstones, so they're researching different types of gemstones, and where they're located and values and stuff. History kind of timeline of John Deere Company. We have, I don't know, people, kids making blankets for the Humane Society, collecting materials and making blankets and donating to the Humane Society in Great Bend. Coding for video games, some of that. Science of dirt track racing was another one that kind of stood out to me. So these kids, and everybody has different levels of what they're going to end up producing, obviously, because our kids are all different. But one thing I can say is that they've all been engaged in this process, some more so than others, but that's true in any classroom. So kind of excited about it. I'm hoping to have a couple kids come in and talk to you maybe next month about kind of what they're doing and what it's meant to them. But we've been pretty closely coordinating, or not coordinating, but Halsted's done this for a few years, and we're kind of communicating with them. And this last week, they, they did a Skype meeting with us to kind of go over what they were doing and stuff. So it's been, not just for us, but it's helped us kind of just get our creativity going. With our activities, our games Friday night, we're with Ness City, we're canceled, so we're going to play February 8th, which makes us play a lot of games in a short period of time, but that's, we don't have a lot of dates to choose from. The tournament, Junior IJV tournament that was supposed to be in Ellenwood Saturday has been moved to this coming Saturday, and it will be, Central Plains will be hosting that instead of Ellenwood. We've already talked about the Midwinter Classics. It's coming up, 21st through 25th, and then the Hilltop Classic, 27th through the 31st. I'm curious what my board minutes will look like next year at this time, for what tournaments we're going to. Anyway, that's all exciting time, get a lot of people in the building, the Midwinter Classics, so looking forward to that. And the Junior High CPO tournament coming up, first part of February, that's coming down in Erie. KMEL state auditions were on the calendar for the 11th. They got moved to the 18th because of weather. I think the only student we have, I think Jay Fertillo's auditioning. We have the County Spelling Bee coming up the 29th, it will be in Maxville this year, and our Geography Bee will be the 31st. Supposed to be Wednesday, we give the Communities of Care Survey, and I say supposed to be, because I normally have gotten something from Green Bush Service Center, but I haven't gotten anything. Have you gotten anything from them?
I don't remember.
Okay. So anyway, what the Communities of Care Survey is, is it's a survey that kind of measures our risk factors to our kids, what kind of activities they've been involved in, you know, and it covers drug, alcohol, depression, suicidal thoughts and tendencies, online violence, things like that. So it gives us a good indicator of where we're at, and we give it to the, or where our students are at. We give it to students of grades six, eight, 10, and 12. It's done across the state, so we get to compare our data. What this really will help us with, or helps us with, and will continue as we look at trauma-informed and see what aces these kids have, or what incidents through their lives these kids have. The survey kind of gives us a scope of what's going on right now in their lives. As a student body, we don't see anything about individual students. What we see is a percentage of our student body, how they answer each way on each question. So as we move forward with our, with our trauma-informed, this is really important data for us to look at and be able to kind of see what we need, what our next move needs to be, I guess. Any other questions? Any questions?
Is this the program that Natalie Park does work with?
Yes, I think so. Seems like she was involved in, or maybe the startup of it, I'm not sure. I'm not, I'm not 100% sure on that, but...
The first bullet item there is accountability reports. The legislature directed the State Department of Education to come up with these accountability reports, exactly. But they had to be on one page front and back, and it had to have all of this information, so they crammed it all on one page front and back. So sometimes it's better to have State Department of Education determine how that happens, rather than to write it in law that it has to be front and back. than to write it in law that it has to be front and back like that. But anyway, these reports are posted on the state's website and they're also required to be posted on our website. So our website, we have accountability reports there already. I need to put these on there yet this week. But we've had this budget information on there, we always do. It gets lots of traffic, lots and lots of people look at this and call me and ask me questions. That's a joke if nobody looks at this. I get very few questions on this, but it's out, but it's out there. We put it out there every year. It's updated information. We'll include that as part of this. So what's there? I won't go through it in detail, but just so we know what's on there. There's three reports. This first one, the first two pages is for the district. So it shows our demographics, academically prepared for post-secondary success. That's state assessment. So we have level one, two, three, and four. Levels two, three, and four mean at grade level. So this isn't even showing at grade level. This is, okay, these kids are ready for college, for some post-secondary education, not just graduation, for science, math, English, language arts. Here we have our Kansas Can Star recognition. We covered that briefly last week about the new recognition program. I've got mixed feelings about that, but that's on there. Our post-secondary effectiveness rate, this is where we look at two years out of high school, are kids successful or not for public, or for post-secondary education? And what are the rates on there? Well, basically of all of the kids that we see at St. John High School, 52% of them are successful with their education two years out. They're still continuing on. They've graduated or they've got a certificate of some sort to get them a job. What's this rate here, the confidence interval? That's our predicted rate based on our population and data around the state, where we'd expect that to be. So a little bit better than that, a little bit better than the state average. And then down here is some information on graduation. I won't read all this to you. And then expenditures per pupil. The backside is state assessment scores. It's all state assessment information, levels three and four. Remember, two, three, and four are at grade level, three and four are prepared for college. So they're just counting levels three and four and what's the history of those for each of those subjects. And then some graphs there. And then there's ACT. The next two pages would be the high school report and then the next two pages would be the elementary. So take that with you. If you have questions, feel free to give me a call. I will send you another report, but I'm not gonna go over it because it's really awful. It's, it's seven, seven pages, I think, yeah, of graphs and financial data that doesn't give you a good picture of what's going on, but it's information that they're required to put out. So I'll send you this one as well in an email, but I wanted you to have that because it's going on our website and if people call and say, hey, what's, what's up with this? At least you have that information. Any quick questions on that? Board appreciation. Thank you for doing this. I know it takes a lot of time. People don't realize how much time it takes sometimes. And Alisa has hooked you up with some goodies there and some brownies. So have a brownie, have your mint and thank you for doing what you do. And you do have a certificate there signed by some class in the district. All different classes, right? But anyway, I appreciate what you guys do. Thanks, Alisa, for putting all that together. We have an investment meeting with the South Central Community Foundation tomorrow. They had, they hired a new investment firm last year, I think. I informed you that. At that point, they've transitioned to a new online system that we have access to see our investment performance and all of that. We've not had reports for basically a year. So we're hoping to find out more information on that, why don't we have access to that? They can send us older reports, but having access to it on the fly is, has not been developed enough and we can't find it. So we have a meeting with them tomorrow and see how our investments are doing and with the foundation.
Do you have any idea? I mean, are they sending anything to us on a?
They sent us, they sent us the second quarter report is the last thing we saw. So we haven't seen the third quarter. Fourth quarter we wouldn't get for another month anyway, so we're a fourth quarter behind on what we're doing, but it's, it's, it's long-term investments, so not really for six months isn't a huge deal. Prom parent basketball tournament was a great success. We let a group use our facility, raise some, some money and Raymond and Alisa had that effort up and Michelle and White Houston had up the concession effort, so. Had 18 teams this year. It was a good tournament. KSDE audit is going on this week. They come in and count our enrollment for our final budget figures they're in today and tomorrow. We've got a new auditor in, so we'll, we'll see how that goes. He's not only new to us, he's new to the, to the job, so. So we always end up up or down a few enrollment-wise from where I predicted we would be. It always, always works out that way. I will send this to you. Just kind of brought it to mind. We have this board member notebook. If you wanted it in print, I'd be glad to print it off again. But Raymond's got his and I thought, well, I better update you all. Just a few things on what's here. Mostly this is, some of this is on our website as far as the public information, like the terms and positions for each board member and what our districts are, our mission and vision, and our board goals that we've established. KSDE's vision of success, their vision. And then our Board of Education business calendar, what are the typical things we cover in a month? This is where I revisit this every meeting to make sure we're covering what we need to cover. When does the election stuff happen and those things? Superintendent evaluation form, just for your reference. And information about executive session, what are the reasons we can go into closed session? Just a general from KSB, board member do's and don'ts. And then there's a, the rest of this, the bulk of that is just the boardsmanship, all different parts of being a board member. If you ever have questions, something to refer to. So I'll send that updated notebook in a, in an email and let me know if you want it in print as well.
Were we supposed to be sworn in for any jumping?
You have to sign it. We've never done that. We've never done the verbal. It's always just been sign. You guys wanna be sworn in?
I saw that they swore in the new city council.
I don't know why it's, that we've never done that. It's always been we sign it.
We can, we've always just signed it and taken it to the court.
Yep. So the reason why, I don't know. We continue with past practice.
As long as we all got that.
Yeah.
As long as we all got that thing to turn back in.
Yeah. So that's all I had for my report. Thank you. Executive session. I don't have anything for personnel, unless anybody else needed to discuss anything. Okay?
Yes. How long?
Two minutes. Can we combine them?
Nope.
Mr. President, I move the board go into executive session to discuss performance of specific employees pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under KOMA with Mr. White and Mr. Meyer to be included and that we return to open session at 5:23.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the board go into executive discussion, session to discuss the performance of specific employees pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under KOMA with Mr. White and Mr. Meyer to be included and that they return to open session at 5:23 in this room. All those in favor, say aye. On the same side? Okay, motion carried. Okay, can we get any motion?
Mr. President, I move the board go into executive session to discuss a student discipline issue pursuant to the exception relating to actions adversely or favorably affecting a student under KOMA with Mr. Meyer and Mr. White to be included and that we return to open session at 5:27 in this room.
It's been moved and seconded that the board go into executive session to discuss a student discipline issue pursuant to the exception relating to actions adversely or favorably affecting a student under KOMA with Mr. White and Mr. Meyer to be included and we return to open session at 5:27 in this room. Of all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same side? Okay, motion carried. Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order and resignations contracts.
Duffin?
Okay, future agenda.
Now you have your future gen items. I'll recommend those final policy updates or that one update. And then create the potential for those property purchases, want to finalize one or both of those or make that work, contract. And then we'll start looking at calendar and courses and curriculum and all that next month.
Okay. We have a motion to adjourn. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We adjourn. All those in favor, aye. On the same side, motion carried. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, Alisa.